That's Route 21, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 5th legislative district.
At the Dollar Store?
It is.
It is. It was recommended for a focal biplane.
We don't have enough of them. We need more.
Dollar General?
Dollar General.
Those are a welcome sight when you're in the middle of nowhere.
Any comments on A?
I'm the resolution limiting the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105, Tennessee Code annotated. To rezone from Harwood Suburban Residential District to C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 009, Parcel 103.02, located at 2001 Waller Ferry Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 5th legislative district. This is recommended by the planning commission for approval, with an exception that access be provided off Highway 321. The commercial access will not be off Waller Ferry.
Mr. Chairman, that's a 5th district right there, and I was at the planning commission meeting, and there's three parcels, Rob, Helen, Matt, there's three parcels of property that's front 321, and it's my understanding they're all family, Jim?
I believe so, yes.
And the one in blue is the one that's in question. And without seeing what the lay of the ground is, it doesn't really make any sense. I think there's a need for a power line going through it. And I would have probably been opposed to it, except for the fact the planning commission went ahead and said, "You're not going to run a commercial business off Waller Ferry. Waller Ferry can't take the traffic." So if anybody buys it and wants to use it, they'll have to come to 321, and that in itself will present some challenges, but that's not our problem. The property just to the north of it is in Littlewood City, if I'm not mistaken, in Zone C3. And then down here, the blue one, the two little strips, and then the next one down is the big historic place that had all the Amazon trucks for a while, and now they've got all the campers and stuff. So it's just those three little properties. And Rosemary, if I could say the name, Ms. Smith, she was a teacher for a lot of years that owns one of those. She lives in there too, so that's the family of Loudoun too. So I'm going to be okay with that. I haven't heard a word from anybody else from it, so as far as I know, it'll be fine.
See, as we're pushing in the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105, Tennessee Code annotated, to rezone from A2 Rural Residential District to Harwood Suburban Residential District, Loudoun County Tax Map 058, Parcel 006.00, located at 4860 Simpson Road, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 5th legislative district. Planning commission recommended denial of this rezone.
Mr. Chairman, this has now been definitely determined to be in the 4th district. I'll stop right here and say, I talked to Gary Whitfield just a little while ago. He's out of ICU. He's in a private room now. Says he's feeling great, having a little trouble with his AFib. He had open-heart surgery, for those of you who might not know, but he's doing really, really good. If all goes well and stays like it is, he hopes to get to come home either Wednesday or Thursday. So that's our latest report on Gary, and we're all very pleased to hear that. But this is in Gary's district, and before he went up the knife, he said, "If I die, if anything goes wrong, you make sure this property doesn't get rezoned." His constituents have reached out to him and said, "We don't want it. It doesn't fit." Jim, I think, can back me up on that. If Gary is here by October 7th, he'll handle it. If he's not, his recommendation would be to take the planning commission recommendation and deny the rezone request.
I've also talked to several who we thought it was in the 1st, and they don't want it either, so.
Resolution limiting the zoning map of Loudoun County, Tennessee, pursuant to Chapter 7, 13-7-105, Tennessee Code annotated, to rezone, basically remove the agricultural stipulation, C2 General Commercial District, Loudoun County Tax Map 007, Parcel 062.00, located at 19666 Highway 11, Loudoun County, Tennessee, situated in the 5th legislative district. The planning commission made recommendation to remove the ag stipulation.
I'm going to do a little background on this. We have several folks here. I think some are planning to speak to this when it comes to public comment time. We've been dealing with this parcel of property up there for a number of years. It started out wanting to be a very large residential project. That didn't fly. Then I think since you all, since 2022, maybe it's 420, I don't remember. Anyhow, one of the Myers brothers came in, and they were speculating and asked to have it rezoned to C2, and that they were going to build an agricultural retail business. Jim, help me if I get off the rails here. And so what we ultimately did, we approved the rezone with the designation of an agricultural retail business. That's all. That's what it could be. That's what they told us they wanted. That's what we said it could be. Of course, that project never happened, never materialized. So now another owner has it. What they're asking now is to have the agricultural designation removed. What they're wanting to build now is storage buildings. Like I said, I have a number of citizens that live right up against this property right here, and I don't know exactly where all the process is. But if we do ultimately vote to remove the agricultural designation, it will then be designated storage buildings only for that developer, builder, whoever it is. We're not just going to leave that parcel of property as a C2 unregulated like that. So that's a little bit of the background also. When you hear these folks talk, that'll give you a little bit more kind of what we got going. We'll see how that all develops.
All of these will be on October 2nd's commission meeting. You're clear. Public comments? Kathleen F. Holder?
Hello, thanks for listening and listening to speak. I wanted to first point out that we have a neighborhood on Old State Road and Shipley Lane. It doesn't seem like your usual neighborhood where you have maybe a, you know, a set area where all houses are all close together, kind of spread out. But we are a neighborhood. And I wanted to give a shout out to Commissioner Ben Shaver, because he, along with Marion, one of our neighbors, realized that we wanted to get together and talk about this. And he and Marion organized it so that our spread-out neighbors could come and sit in Marion's yard and talk about it. And it's the great way to do it. And I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. I felt like you were really doing your job. I appreciate it. So now, when I think about having this storage units, I would never look for a home that was adjacent to storage units. They, we do realize that there's a piece of property that's going to be built up with something. I have been listening to what people say. I'm thinking, if we did have storage units there, I don't want to see them. So where I live is across the street from where the storage units are, kind of kitty corner. And so I would like to see some landscaping in front of the storage units, if they end up being there, that, so I don't have to see the storage units. And the neighbors don't have to see the storage units. Now, I appreciate that a landscaper has given us a drawing that shows a lot of trees that border the units. On Old State Road, what they draw are deciduous trees. There are a few evergreens, but there are deciduous trees. And as you know, in the winter, leaves fall off deciduous trees. And it's not going to give you any kind of screen against this, these units. I would like to see a dense planting of evergreens. And I've seen these, there's a really nice dense planting of evergreens on Smith Road that they put outside of a golf course, and it looks great. So I mean, if there is something good, I feel like I would be more amenable to this idea if there was a nice green on Old State Road, so we didn't have to see the tin can things that are going, that are. Also, there's a few other things I wanted to mention, and apparently this, at this stage, it is not laid out yet, and that is lighting. I've looked at some of these that are on Shipley Lane, and each of the units has their own light on it, and I don't know if it's motion, light or not. I didn't write down and look at it at night. So I'm wondering what the light solution will be. I'm wondering, let's see. Oh, I'm wondering what the building is that, like all of the, whenever there's one of these kinds of storage unit places, there's a building that you go to and you sign up for. I would like to know where the building is on this whole property that you would sign up for, or is that something that's going to be added on later somewhere else? And that's what I have for now. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Sheila Woody?
Hello, I'm Sheila Woody, and so I'm here to talk about that property that they're wanting to do, the storage buildings. So I, basically, I guess my thought is it's almost close to nine acres. And they're wanting to almost, it appears to be max out the property for storage buildings. And it, I mean, it's like, everything is storage buildings for pavement, and then, I guess, you know, the settings. And it just seems like to me that it's going to cause a lot of problems. Not only, you know, we're not crazy about having storage buildings right there, but like Kathleen said, I mean, eventually, something's going to be developed there. And if it is storage buildings, I mean, I would think, I mean, right now, there's over, I guess, right at 50% of the property, correct me if I'm wrong, is storage buildings and pavement. And then, is that correct? Anyways, it's a lot. And I was just thinking, I mean, there's all kinds of things that go through my mind, and I drive through and drive down the road to look at storage buildings. You know, some of them have almost flat rows, very, you know, very low pitches. They, some of them have like solar panels on top of them, which, you know, that's pretty, you know, that's not aesthetically pleasing, to say the least. Not to mention the, you know, the, I don't know, the noise. We don't know how much noise. Probably not a huge amount, but the lighting and just the different kind of things that, I guess, the storage buildings bring. It's just unpleasant. And, let's see. So, I mean, if it was agreed, I think it needs to be some kind of upper quality, finer building material that looks better from Old State Road and from Highway 11. I mean, people coming in from Knox County to Loudoun County, we've got that nice retaining wall, that block, retaining wall. Then you see almost immediately a whole bunch of storage buildings. And if this passes, then it's going to be even more storage buildings. And I mean, it's, I don't think that's a good feel to come into an area and just see that. So I think, not only would it lower our property values, it just kind of looks bad for Littlewood City. I guess really, that's all I had to say, is just the property values will go down. And, I mean, if they could do something to cut down the number of storage units, I think that would be a good thing, instead of, I think there's 15 or 16 buildings plus the office. I mean, the landscape plan looks good, but, I mean, then after you study it, the deciduous trees, I mean, that doesn't, in the winter, hide anything. So I think that would have to be kind of tweaked a little bit. But the main thing is, it's just very unsightly. And, you know, we are a community, and it just doesn't feel good to think that you're going to pull out of your driveway and see all that. Thank you for your time. That's all I have to say.
Marion Hanson?
Thank you. I, Marion Hanson, I live at 13540 Old State Road, and I'd like to make a comment. The geology of East Tennessee is mostly clay and limestone rock. And over the years, submerged limestone has been dissolved by mildly acidic rainwater. Consequently, Tennessee has the most caves in any state in the U.S. And it's in this forming of caves in the earth. These caves are close to, if they are close to the earth's surface, then you can see an indentation or a bowl forming. And we call these bowls sinkholes here. These sinkholes can be seen as these depressions in the earth if these dissolved areas are close to the surface. The sinkhole existed upon the ridge between Shipley Lane and the Loudoun County lines some 20 years ago. And this sinkhole was filled by the cut that was made to form the lumberyard behind the Ace Hardware Store. So when that sinkhole was filled, then that turned it into two lots. And since it was up on the ridge, and it could completely fill those sinkholes, those have now had two homes that are added to the property values and nicely residences in our neighborhood. And it did not have any impact on the neighbors by filling that particular sinkhole, since it was up on the ridge. Now, across from that, Shipley Lane, a hollow exists, and it runs parallel to Old State Road. And it starts at Shipley Lane, and it runs down across East Ollie's property, through my property, behind Bo and Linda Walsh's property, and behind, and terminates, those hollows terminates behind the Martins' property. But that hollow or that depression also continues to the property owned by Esquire LLC, which is the property being considered tonight. The Martins purchased this home from the Browns. The Browns had two teenage sons that endlessly rode their four-wheel ATBs through the mud wall that was formed by this sinkhole. And that is currently owned by Empire Properties. So that was a region that's a low-lying area, and it's wet a lot of the time. This proposed location is for the storage units number four and five on the drawing. So if you hold up, or you look at the drawing of the proposal, units number four and number five would be sitting in this recess or sinkhole area. Now, you say, if you fill the sinkhole up the road on Shipley Lane, why can't you fill this one? Yes, you can fill this one also by cut-and-fill on that property, but consequently, that would then fill up sort of a dam-like area, and the Martins' backyard would turn into a pond as a consequence of filling the neighboring property's sinkhole. So far, samples and analysis for this proposed construction need to be completed by a Tennessee licensed professional engineer before the next meeting on this, so that you can go ahead and vote more information on what this property really is. No one's said anything yet about the topography. You can look online on the U.S. Geological Survey maps and see that there's a large variation in the topography of this land. There's a bridge, but it rolls off very sharply on the Shipley Lane side down behind the Hardware Store. But it also rolls off towards US 11, down into the sinkhole area. So that kind of serious study of, let's say, making the topography and what's constructed there be compatible and how that all fits together, I feel like that should all be evaluated before you make a vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John Martin?
Holy cow. What about that? You can't get around publicists. That's one.
Thank you all for hearing me. Maybe some of you heard me now four times about issues with this property next to ours. We are, the property on Old State Road, my wife and I, own that property right east of and south of the property. So we're in our most affected piece of property as far as adjoining. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that inform my life's and my feelings about this. But to be short and succinct, as best as I can. I grew up gardening with my grandmother, my parents, and loving nature, yet lamenting how things we're seeing in creation sure did not stack up to how they were created. We sure don't live in an Eden anymore. And I prayed for years for a piece of land that I could steward, even just a small piece of land. Our property, which we do feel the Lord led us to after we've been serving in Japan for 18 years as a family. It's only an acre and almost a fifth. But will give me the chance, and is giving me the chance, to steward that little bit of creation. And I hope and pray make a good home for my wife and myself. A place where we can rest and continue working from, even as we get older. We had to leave Japan at the end of our last term there, which was limited, and we got out just in the middle of the COVID stuff. So we had felt the Lord really believing us and to give us, after almost a year's search, that piece of land that we could even afford. I'm trying to stick to the notes so I won't get too emotional, but this is big stuff for me. Part of how I'm using the land now, is I'm working now to produce blackberry plants to donate to the Bloom Center at Bearden's Central Baptist Church. It's a work they have to help disabled people with plants and planting and training. Regarding the land next to, next door to and behind our property, the land in question at this meeting, I am in favor. We are in favor of removing the agricultural requirement for that. But land has not been taken care of. But talking about stewardship, it evidently was bought as some kind of investment years ago, as it seems to be. But it's just been let go and let to deteriorate and become a problem for us neighbors. So we're here again tonight talking about, the new owner does want to make something out of this land that could benefit himself and others too. And I believe that the owner should be able to benefit from his land, including using any lumber that might be gotten from the trees currently on the property. The owner's working very hard, as far as I can see. Even had, he hired a lawyer, landscape architect. They've wanted to talk with me about the things we were concerned about. He's spending some money to do things right, to put into practice the things that have developed with this property from commission. That includes a 25-foot planted buffer zone around the property lines, and will include a fence, six-foot-high fence. The buffer zone will be for screening up light and activity and reducing noise. And the owner will be replacing the trees removed to grade the land and get rid of the things like the English ivy growing up, pulling the trees down, spreading everywhere, Asian honeysuckle, Japanese privet, as well as to prepare for building. And even though the landscape architect has been putting together a plant pallet that would seem to meet the needs and fit in well, the proposal, as I understand it, would include the landowners abiding the property, being able to choose the kinds of planting that they want. So if they're particularly enamored with a certain kind of planting, the property owner will give them that. Thank you for your concern about the drainage, Mr. Hanson. Yes, the water does come down, but that is something that the landscape architect, the owner and the lawyer are aware of. The topography also affects the way that the winds blow, when we have these storms that come through. And in this past year, we've had at least four trees of different sizes break or be blown down right in our neighborhood. One even at Mr. Hanson's property that went across the road. I'm very glad it did not hurt anybody for them. As far as land being used for storage units, it would be hypocritical for ex-colony to say we're against storage units. For all the years we were in Japan, if we had not had a storage unit we could rent, we would have really had trouble. We would not have been able to store things. We're just now being able to use some things we got when we got married 32 years ago. The benefits for us personally with this proposal, which I guess has not all been presented yet since we're just doing the removal of the agricultural stipulation. But the six-foot property line fence will help limit trespassers, some of which came onto our property just two weeks ago. I left evidence with my cotton wrappers and napkins and bags. And it was recent enough, between the time I had been there and when I went there, two mornings later, they weren't even wet yet. So sometime in the night, I guess, over those two nights. Replacing the tall trees that could break or completely blow down and crush our house will relieve us and could even save our lives in a storm. Reducing the shade cast onto our property will help us grow more food and ripe fruit, like the apples I hope to harvest in a few years from the trees. My wife and I planted, yes, she even helped me plant. And reducing the amount of weed infestation on our property and others' property from the seeds of invasive plants growing out on the property being discussed. Let me wrap things up by saying we continue to hope for and pray for, we're actively praying for, a good resolution to this situation for everyone concerned. The owner, the neighbors, all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Susan Gingrich?
Good evening. You know, I am Susan Gingrich from Telkow Village, and also an activist for good government. I see one of our commissioners is missing tonight, since I did copy you on the second email to him, Chairman Cullen. I get very tired of emailing or asking for information and not receiving it. I sent this email to Commissioner Waller on Saturday, September 9. Dear Commissioner Waller, could you please tell me where the individual contact information for the current members of the LCSWDC is located on the county's website? If it isn't there, why not? Regardless, I would like a copy from you to reach out to the members. No reply. So on September 16th, I'm sure I have my dates right. September 16th, I sent a second message. And the message said, "I included Chairman Cullen in the second request because he voted for you as chairman of the LCSWDC during the all-male coup when Pat Hunter was removed as chairman and replaced by you, another county commissioner. I'm requesting public information, and I expect to receive it, Chairman Waller." Thank you. Today, I've heard nothing from him and nothing from you. Did you know if you received my email?
I got your email. You addressed it to Commissioner Waller. He's on a business trip. When he comes back, hopefully he'll get you the information.
All right. Well, if I was a county commissioner, I'd be checking my email when I was anywhere else. Thank you. The second has to do with Commissioner Shaver. He was kind enough to include me in his gossip web column.
All right, no personal attacks tonight.
I will be refuting what was said about me.
Listen, say it here, Mr. Chairman, I'll call the board. If she's got personal issues, get with me after the meeting. We got business to conduct here tonight.
We got business. We know where you stand.
It's the same every meeting. Same story.
You've got agenda issues here to deal with, jump on it, otherwise, let's move on.
Well, I do have an agenda item, yes.
Which one?
It has to do with the budget process.
Okay, move on to it.
Okay. I make public comments often and I write often. And when I ran for commissioner, this was something that I wrote and it applies today. It was written seven-three, seven-three, twenty-nineteen. A grueling and combative budget process just ended, culminating in passage of a budget not in the best interest of taxpayers. As usual, the public was particular, was partially informed, details withheld from them prior to the vote and their concerns, with the exception of increasing taxes minimized or flatly ignored. Did the commissioned Budget Committee actually pass the budget in committee? Or was a non-vote intentional and a gentleman's agreement made to spend more than the amount in the posted budget document? I consider honesty and integrity prerequisites for any gentleman or lady. Including plans for a $7 million new courthouse annex building without real public input is a big expensive deal. It is a lot of money, just like spending the three-and-a-half million from the fund balance, our county's rainy day fund. When I ran for county office, something I will never do again, I was told that I didn't know how things work here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-nineteen, come on. If you've got something on a nice budget, if you've got something, speak to it. We've heard all of this.
You were sitting there this afternoon, we did very well on the county's fund balance this year, we managed the money.
Is it, is it your role to shut up the public, the taxpayers?
When all the rails like this, move on. We've got business to do. We have things to do. These people came here to deal with issues. You're talking about twenty-nineteen, that's totally irrelevant from tonight. Move it, look, move into it or move on.
Nothing has changed.
Okay, that's fine.
The transparency here, the transparency now is even less than it was back in twenty-nineteen because of you.
Your opinion.
Because you have too many people that follow you.
No personal attacks, go sit down.
We're done. Talk about what we're doing or don't, just do your thing here. Nobody cares what you wrote in twenty-nineteen.
Well, nobody cares what you wrote and you're haters, hater, you know, haters versus haters. I'm not a hater. I've never been a hater.
Move along.
Sit down.
That's enough. We don't have to, this is a workshop. We have our formal meetings, I'll tell this to everybody, we have formal meetings that are very organized and we have business meetings. That's formal, we have a certain level of, certain level of decorum. We have a workshop, it's a lot less formal. That's where we can have this kind of a back and forth. And we don't have to sit here and be berated and browbeat by people just because you ran for office, you lost, I'm sorry, it's over. Move along.
But you're not even honest about it, Ben.
I'm done.
You can't be honest.
Slow down.
And you, you, he supported you when you ran against me. You're, you're, and you're one of his, he's the hypocrite and you're one of them.
Sit down, will you? We've had enough.
Let folks talk that's got something to say.
I'm embarrassing myself. Y'all embarrass yourselves.
Okay, that's your opinion.
Have a good day. Thank you for coming. Ben Mullins.
I apologize to people here, but those of you that are new to this, we've just tolerated this about as long as we're going to tolerate it. So, Mr. Mullins, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner, my name is Ben Mullins. I'm an attorney, Francis Mullins Seymour. I represent the owner of the Highway eleven property at Old Stage and Shipley that we've talked about with storage units. I've been working on this property for about a year now, just a little bit after the current owner, Esquire Management, bought the property. We've looked at a couple of different projects we want to move forward to and, you know, they weren't the right thing for this property. And so we're looking at a way to try to come to a reasonable use of the property to be able to develop it and address some of the fallow issues that Mr. Martin mentioned that they're just sitting there. We move forward with this concept plan for self-storage. And this is just a very preliminary concept plan. At the rezoning, the only thing we're here considering is the removal of the agricultural stipulation. If that is approved and then a no stipulation is placed on it saying it can only be used for self-storage in the C-one zone, that site plan has to go back through the Planning Commission for a full site plan review. We haven't had stormwater engineers, we know, we're in Tennessee, we know there's car stopographies or seagulls and everybody's property floods and we'll have to address all of that. We haven't gone through the process yet because we don't know if we can do what we can do until this body approves it. When that happens, we will have engineers look at the drainage, look at the geology and figure out, work with the county, Mr. Jenkins and his group, and figure out what can be done on the property. It might not be as many units, it might be less, depending on what can actually be developed. But all we're here tonight at the voting meeting is asking for permission to try to engineer it in a way that would work. We were aware, you know, the stipulations that are placed on it wasn't just the agricultural stipulation, it was also no access to Shipley or Old Stage, which we're respecting that, we're not asking for that to be removed. And also for this 25-foot buffer along residential, which is there, you'll see there's a 25-foot buffer, we have, this is completely fenced, ill-gated. We are working with, you know, with Mr. Martin and I'm with Ms. Offler, Apphalter, today. I mean, and she expressed her concerns about there being more deciduous trees and once more evergreens and then things that would create more of a buffer. And we'll work with them on all of that. I mean, landscaping's got to be the landscaping and what gets put in there, we have a lot of flexibility, we'll be happy to continue to work with that. Lighting, that's something that will get worked out in the permitting process as well. But this property, you know, it's going to be developed into something and self-storage is one of the least intensive uses that you could look at for commercial property. It's a lot less intensive than the agricultural retail development would be. The way the topography sits, especially as you get down closer to Highway eleven, it's going to be down low, you know, and so the buildings aren't, we already have over anybody. This is something that would be, it'd be good for the tax rules, it would be good to get the property back to some use to keep vagrants from wandering on, to keep the ivy and the trees from blowing over. And we can address concerns about stormwater and lighting and block coverage and those things at the right time, and we're actually having a real site plan, not just a concept. We just wanted to show a concept as to basically how it's going to be laid out and how we're going to respect the buffer around this surrounding property. So I really appreciate your consideration. If any of the neighbors, they have my email, Mr. Shavers, I shared my email with them, they can contact me anytime to talk about this process now or even in the future as we move forward. Thank you all very much.
Blake Moore.
Hi, my name is Blake Moore and I want to thank the mayor.
He had to go.
He knew you was going to talk, he said, "I'm not listening, that guy."
I thought that's what it was going to be. Well, I'll still say it, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. During many recent meetings here, I've heard people stand before this body and talk about things that this commission has done wrong. However, what I don't care a lot about is personal accountability and actionable solutions from those people. For example, a few of our community members have stood at this podium and chastised this commission for urging our state representatives not to act hastily regarding red flag laws. Their premise is that it is better to do something rather than nothing at all and that we need to get guns out of the hands of those who might do bad things with them, such as those with a mental illness. Fully understood. However, according to recent information from Johns Hopkins University and the CDC, there is approximately 21 to 26% of Americans who could have symptoms of mental illness. I wouldn't need any comments from my wife on that about me. It is important to note that this involves approximately 86 million Americans and if you extrapolate those numbers, up to 15,600 Loudoun County residents based upon the Johns Hopkins and CDC numbers. Also, there's been little mention of the laws that are already in place within the state of Tennessee that do many of the same things that my fellow residents are advocating should be done. For example, Tennessee already has laws including TCA thirty-three-six-four-oh-two, which provides for the immediate detention of dangerous individuals experiencing a mental health crisis by a law enforcement officer, physician, psychologist, or certain other designated professionals. This procedure can be utilized when, one, a person has a mental illness or serious emotional disturbance, and, two, the person poses an immediate substantial likelihood of serious harm because of the mental illness or serious emotional disturbance. This person may be detained in this manner and is then evaluated to determine whether they meet the criteria for admission to a hospital or treatment resource. Of the extrapolated approximately 15,600 Loudoun County residents who might have a mental impairment, who is going to determine which of those impairments might result in an assault or, heaven forbid, a mass shooting? Of course, the most common thing we hear on the news is that we need to ban assault weapons and AR-style weapons. As we all know, AR really stands for armalite, does not stand for automatic rifle. This, of course, ignores the fact that, according to the FBI statistics, rifles of all types are only used in approximately 2.6% of all homicides in the United States. For reference from the FBI, handguns account for 45.7% of all homicides. Firearms of an undefined type, which really means that people just didn't know what type of weapon it was, accounts for 23.9%. Other weapons accounts for 11.4%. Knives or cutting instruments accounts for 10.6%. Hands, fists, feet, et cetera, account for 4.3%. Rifles, 2.6%, shotguns, 1.4%. Some would argue that the rifles should be banned because of the magazine capacity. But if you know anything about weapons, you will know that pistol magazines have high capacities and can be swapped in a matter of seconds. So what do we ban? Knives or cutting instruments account for approximately 75% more homicides than rifles. And hands, fists, and feet account for approximately 60% more homicides than rifles. We have serious problems to solve and we need serious people to solve them. And whatever your particular problem is, I promise you, my fellow citizens, that our federal government is not the least bit interested in or capable of solving it. In our own county, we have presented a potential solution for a new website to replace our outdated site, which will allow us to quickly provide resources available to anyone that is looking or needing information, whether it be for mental health services, veterans' health, child and family services, historical information regarding Loudoun County, community activities, et cetera. I've heard so many people in Loudoun County say they want things to be the way they used to be. If that is the case, then let's all take personal responsibility and accountability to love our neighbors as ourselves and stop yelling at government representatives for not doing enough. I would challenge each person that speaks at this podium to bring potential solutions to problems they see and not dislay the problems and repeat to commissioners and walk away. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Bobby Easterly.
Well, I'm Bobby Easterly and I own three parcels of land that are connected to the zoning at Dixie Lee Junction. I live at one of them. I've owned it since 1997, so I'm kind of an older member of the community there. Thank you, Ben Shaver, for working on the zoning. Just want to go on record saying that I would prefer a residential development on that property, not the commercial storage units. My main concern is light pollution and, you know, this is a small drop in the bucket, but pavement heats up the area, we can get into the environmental impact of it real heavily. I think a residential area would be much more conducive to a more pleasant environment, not just aesthetically, but with the plant material gives to, that would be in a residential development, that would be better for the environment there. But I just want to go on record to say I would rather have a residential development in the property.
Thank you. Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter and I would like to address a couple of items on the agenda. You know, the mayor is gone, but I have a concern about the boards and appointments because some of the terms have expired in June. And I think some of these appointments are important, especially when it deals with the planning commission and also the budget committee. So that's one concern that I have. Another concern that I have has to do with the website. We've been working on that since 2019 and I'm just wondering if we have an update, Coach.
We went through the submissions, there was a vote on recommendation from the committee. I'm not going to say which one it was yet because I don't know what the procedure is for revealing that, but the committee that was asked to do it did take a vote, wasn't unanimous, but they did take a vote to recommend one of the companies that submitted. I'll go ahead, it's Smart, Smarketing? Smarketing was the one that got the most votes, but I don't think there's been any official action as far as the commission adopted anything like that yet.
Do you have any idea what the cost will be to relent the website and would also include transferring the data that we have currently to the new website?
I'm going to say, the number of pages and so forth that would transfer was quite generous. Was there a limit?
There's no limit.
There wasn't a limit on that. I think the two that we like, I believe, was a no cost as far as doing the initial setup, but was the cost would be the monthly premium that we would pay. A lot of the companies said 170,000 for us to design it and then so much a month. The two that we voted on are not charging us any money for doing the program, but just the monthly payment on it and some of, and I think there was a minimum number of months. I think one contract was three years, both of them were three years, whatever. But yeah, we, I don't know who gets the call, is that Klein Schmidt?
It actually, it's on the mayor's desk now, he said it will come to the workshop in October.
Okay. Yeah, that Smarketing is one of the ones that we talked to last time that we weren't overly impressed with, but they've come back evidently. And I'll have to say this, I wasn't at the meeting where the representative was, Smarketing attended, but like I said, I did have the paperwork on them, but we're closer now than we've ever been, Pat.
Okay, sounds like you are, Coach. That's good. The other thing is, under Commissioner Shaver, actually it's a question for the chairman of the EDA Review Committee, will there be another meeting scheduled before a vote of any resolution?
Possibly.
Okay, so it'll be in the newspaper? One thing that I'd like to say, I think everybody has the right to speak. However, if a department or an office is going to be accused of wrongdoing, in my opinion, the department head should be here and any accusations should not be made unless there is proof. We heard 39 minutes of that and it was unfair for the sheriff not to be here to address those issues. That's my personal comment. The other comment that I have has to do with something that I've spoken about in the past and I hope that you consider again positively this time. After hearing at the Budget Committee, then we will have a fund balance on accounting of 15.2 with a $2.5 million increase and 11 million with the school board, an increase of 1.7. I think it's time for this commission to seriously consider a property tax freeze for seniors. We are looking at a possible 30-cent property tax increase. When we had a 20-cent property tax increase, we were promised by a then-commission that you would consider a property tax freeze. This isn't the seniors tax relief, totally different program, their limits are in the neighborhood. Their limits are in the neighborhood, income limits, within the neighborhood of thirty-three thousand. With the senior citizens tax freeze, it's more like forty-four thousand. You have to own your own property, and you have a tax freeze. My relatives live in LA, they have a tax freeze. My brother lives in Texas, they have a tax freeze. I think it's time for this commission to get back to the community, especially the seniors that have paid their taxes diligently over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comments. Billy Pickle.
Mr. Chairman, hang on one second. I want to come back, just while we're still hot on the topic around this whole stage thing, and reiterate.
Sure.
Between now and October the second, Mr. Mullins, and I'm going to tell you, out of all the years I've been doing this, I've never seen an attorney or a representative work at it like he has. But between now and then, hopefully, we'll be able to come up with what the final plan. I want to say again, with Jim Jenkins sitting in the back, what we will be considering one way or the other coming October second is whether or not to remove the agricultural designation on that property. That doesn't approve storage buildings, it still has to go through all the planning. What's drawn on a piece of paper looks great, but that's not going to be what the final product looks like. So my encouragement will be to continue, Mr. Mullins, all the neighbors up there, work with Mr. Mullins, come up with what works for everybody. My fear of that parcel of property forever has been, forever has been, what's it going to be? We all know what it's been proposed up to now. Ms. Woody has the best way to solve this problem. A few years ago, in the lot in front of her house, they wanted to use storage. We ultimately knocked that one down, so she bought the property. So it's not ever going to be used storage now, and it's nice and safe and secure, and I think it'll be out there for a long time. Not suggesting you all buy the property, but if you want to keep all the trees on the property, buy the property. Problem solved. So hopefully, they'll get this worked out, and we'll have something to be able to parent it on October the second. And I appreciate all of y'all coming down.
The only thing that's on the table right now is just removing the ag stipulation.
And if we remove it, we're going to add the storage building stipulation. We're not going to leave it as a blank C1. Did you say it's C1? C2? C2, Jim's tell me.
But it'll have to come back to Jim and his...
Everything has to go back to Jim, yes, that's correct.
To get approved.
That's right.
Sure.
So that's the background on that. We'll see what happens.
I've got plenty of them in my district. I've got three of them on three twenty-ones and JB's almost to the county line.
After you do.
Along with the dollar stores.
A new one.
Hey, I could trade you a dollar store for a storage unit.
Billy, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been meaning to get back here for the last couple of months. I presented you with a letter for you to have to put up in the archives if you wish, but I talked to a few of the commissioners about coming to thank you all. I wanted to thank you all. September first was a year after taking office. Just kind of wanted to give you the little rundown on what we've accomplished together. If you've gotten an email from me in the last six or eight months, probably, you'll notice I signed it as working together. I changed it for driving safely, which I'd used for probably twelve or thirteen years, I guess, to working together whenever you all chose to use the AR, some of the AR funding to buy a couple of tractors for us. It's stored, that was $400,000 worth of equipment that was lost and is now serving. But through some other commissioners appropriations of their AR funds, and more on the way maybe, we've already resurfaced forty roads in last year. We did several much-needed filters and replacements. Now, some of this stuff's, you know, out of our arby budget and through AR funds, mainly the paving though and the tractors. So we did purchase an asphalt paper shortly after taking office to try to handle all our jobs in-house. With a few tractors that you all purchased for us, we were able to set a new mowing crew in the third district that stays in the third district full-time, also allowing two tractors to be utilized in the sixth district full-time. Now, under the previous administration there, it been two tractors that mowed everything in the third and then had to come mow everything in the sixth. So that meant there was almost a month that went by without any mowing being done in the third district or the sixth district, whichever way you want to look at it, I guess. We took care of several garb rel replacements and additions around the county and also repainted many of the faded lines, which is kind of day-to-day work. And along with that, we've obviously been doing the ditching, the patching, the mowing, tree cutting, and shoulder work. But what I think is really, what I want to thank you all for is that we've done all this without coming here making a huge budget amendment to draw money out of the reserve to pull this kind of stuff off. There's not been a tax increase, there's not been any debt issued to the highway department to be able to do this. Of course, asphalt being the most expensive thing, you know, when that kind of lumped out, you know, the AR funding took care of a good deal of that, but the Tennessee General Assembly passing the Transportation Modernization Act also gave us quite a bit of money to use in our state aid savings program. Typically, we get a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year through the state to take care of state aid routes. The Transportation Modernization Act gives three million dollars. Now, of course, when we spend it, it's gone, and we go back to getting a hundred and eighty-eight thousand every year. But to get that big of a investment is pretty great. We'll also be getting, through the TMA, we'll also be getting a portion of the electric and hybrid vehicle registration fees, and that's probably bigger than the three million dollars because they index that to the cost of living, so as that goes up, that will also something that fuel taxes not... But thank you all. And I know Commissioner Waller and Commissioner Whitfield are both absent tonight, and they just are the most recent commissioners to have on the agenda to utilize AR funding for resurfacing in their districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you, Billy. Okay, Matt's not here, but there is an increase. I'll ask Aaron to tell you how much it is for the retirees insurance, but welcome to America in 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I happen to know we've got a few things to go. I'm going to call for just a couple of minute break. You think it'll be all right? Everybody got just a minute, minute to break?
Sure.
I'll be back. Y'all do what you want to.
Sounds like a diet cup break. Would you like to go to a rest? Aaron?
Yes?
When we come back, just give me the increase, and we'll roll on. Hey, all of you, this is Mr. President.
Despite two years of...
She's in the legislature with the seven point five, twenty-five percent, press the average of forty-six. TRDA, Village, Romania, and... Thank you.
Welcome to the real world.
No, this past race was the last time.
And it rained again?
Well, it was so funny, you know, the race was seven thirty, they moved it to six thirty. Said, miss the rain. Dude told them to fire the engines, as soon as they fired, it started raining. I mean, you gotta be kidding me.
It seemed like every time.
Hey, I always say, if you're in a drought, you can buy a NASCAR today. But it wasn't, I mean, total rain delay. There was pretty rain delay, but I know it's... But now they've got a truck. I've never seen it. Every car, every truck coming, dead rubber man.
To round up the side cap?
No damage in the car.
That's a good statement.
Welcome to trade if you want to.
We're ready to start. Okay, we're going back in session.
You got a way to open the bills here.
How did you get ahead of us?
You were still back there talking, Pickle.
Oh, you snuck behind.
We've got everybody.
We're here.
Aaron, tell us about the increase in insurance.
So the increase, the amount right now is a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-two cents per person, and it's going to two hundred and five cents per person, and there's eighty-five people on the bill, and that's a total increase of one thousand seventy-three dollars per year.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. Okay, Buddy had to leave. He had boards and committees, and if you looked in your packet, two changes. Capital Projects, Joe Morrison is replacing Will Jenkins. Circles Property Authority, Joe Morrison is replacing Will Jenkins. If you look at the color coding, if it's marked in yellow, they're renewing for another term. If it's in green, there's a name change and renew for the current term. The blue, which is solid waste, the vacancy will be filled. So that's the changes that'll be on for October sixth.
Mr. Chairman, on the planning commission, we had already replaced Pat Cow and Andy Hamilton.
It's in the minutes. It's in the minutes, but...
Okay, because I mean, they're still here.
I think it cleans it up this time.
Okay.
Because we've done that since this.
Okay.
Because that was the first thing I saw too. It's still carrying extra members and everything.
Okay.
We even still have, I know it's still got some of the committees on here that are no longer even in place. We can drop them.
He tells me to take them off, I'll take them.
But just like the, what did y'all call it, the jail committee? What was that one? The partnership discovery?
County Corrections Corrections.
Yes, yes, I mean, it ended with the jail, so it doesn't need to be there anymore. But anyhow, neither here nor there.
Rosemary, I only cut the minutes. It is item sixteen, it's reflected in the minutes. I just didn't get to the list, so I'll get that correct. Okay, all right.
So what's the reason for me coming off the two committees?
He didn't give me a reason, he just...
I think it's just to add Joe to some of them. I don't have any idea. And me on both of them. Do what? And me personally on both of them, but I don't know, Will.
It says here Joe Morrison replacing...
I don't know if you all had X numbers or what it was, so I'll confront him about it on the next meeting.
Give him a call in the morning. I'm sorry I had to leave. Hey, Van Shaver?
All right, I'm going to start off by saying I may have done, in my twenty years of this, I may have done the worst job in history of talking about a resolution and its need or what it's about. I'm going to take one more bite at this apple, and I'll start by explaining, this resolution is about the EDA. Now, I think it's been handed out numerous, numerous times. Hopefully, everybody's got a copy. I don't know if they do or not.
I do.
But whether we're in the EDA for two more years or a hundred more years doesn't alter this resolution. This resolution is about the expectations of our body, given that we are the largest contributors to the EDA by a margin of five times. We have, over the last few years, had a number of conflictual issues with the EDA where I don't know what to call them, chairman, president, CEO, or whatever Jack Qualls is, has worked with the cities to do a particular thing, whether it be annexations, lawsuits, not lawsuits, pilots, whatever it is. Jack has been very instrumental, very instrumental in helping the cities, while whatever these issues might have been have been very detrimental to Loudoun County. For years, we got nothing from the EDA, but for the last six years, we've been hurt by the EDA on a number of things. This resolution does nothing more than to say there's a conflict between us, the county, and the city, that we would expect the EDA board, the EDA president, to defer to the county since we are paying the lion's share. Chase had his meeting, and I believe Mr. Carwell sitting in the back was at that meeting, is all the representative from the city of Loudoun, and I wasn't there. It wasn't recorded, so I didn't sit up, but I've heard different parts of what happened. But it seemed to me, one of the biggest concerns, the biggest conversation was communications. Have we ever communicated to Jack? There may be some feeling that we shouldn't even be talking to Jack. If we have a problem, we shouldn't even talk to Jack through the board. That's a topic for another time. I'm not even going to try to address that. We know what happens if we try to talk to Jack, he doesn't like to talk to us. But Buddy is the chairman of the EDA Executive Board. Commissioner Whitfield is new, but he's now on the board, and I like the ideal of communication. What this resolution would do is to communicate to the EDA board what this body's feel is at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, at a million and a half dollars for the last seven years, that our expectations are somewhat high of what we would like to see from the EDA board and Mr. Qualls. It doesn't bind anybody to anything. They can, most likely, it will get just watered up and thrown in the can somewhere else. But I think we've at least stated, we've said what our expectations are, and the communication line is open to the EDA Executive Board. If this body doesn't want to do it, if everybody here is totally comfortable with us paying this much money for nothing, that's up to you guys. But this one's been on top of my list for twenty years because it's been kind of the same thing for twenty years of the EDA. So... So I'll. Can I ask you a question? I'll go back to Chase, I personally don't think you'll have another meeting, I hope you would, I hope you'd have a lot of them and work something out. But just from what I heard from the last one, I don't know if you will or not. I delayed this one whole month, just because we were gonna wait till the meeting went. I don't know that anything was resolved, but this again has nothing to do with this notice to withdraw or the two-year thing, or like I said, this is what our expectations would always be with the EDA. And as the parent payer, the big one, the paying the bills money, why wouldn't we? William. You say that it's been detrimental to us, the EDA has. Explain how it's been detrimental, and have we not benefited in any way with the new businesses or developments that's come in county-wise getting tax money? The developments, absolutely not. The developments are what's fixing to cost you your new school, the residential. Now, Jack's been very, very helpful with Little City on the residential side of it. The pilots are always detrimental to Loudoun County. And the cities, both cities to be honest with you now, are just handing them out hand over fist as fast as they can come in. And we don't even get a say in it. We now know what the law says, we didn't for many years, but we know what the law says now is the cities can hand out any pilot, payment in lieu of taxes for anybody that's not familiar with that. That means the city can say, okay, that seven million, seventy million dollar business for the next twenty years, you don't have to pay but five hundred dollars a year in property taxes, and you're gonna pay all of it to the city and none to the county. That hasn't happened yet. Little City has done one where they're gonna take more than the county does, but they have all of the authority to determine on pilots. Yes, pilots are bad, we don't get a word to say on it, it'd be nice if they come to us. Annexations, shall I bring up one of the biggest ones in the elephant in the room? Mr. Qualls was one hundred percent involved in that annexation situation that we now have litigation for. Back in two thousand sixteen, did EDA not do a pilot to save the county two hundred million dollars that kept us out of a lawsuit? I have no idea what you're talking about, William. I don't know who told you that, but I've never. With the Tate Law? Oh, no, 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 no. Mr. Qualls came in at that, Tate Law's been going on for years, that was, had nothing to do with Mr. Qualls, I'll assure you, he didn't say anything. Mike Campbell's worked that one out, so I don't know who's feeding you that, but there's no truth to that. But we don't get a say in pilots. Nobody even comes to say to us, we've given away your property taxes. We just had an annexation down in Loudoun, I'm sure Mr. Carwell or Commissioner, Councilman Carwell know, and we don't know anything about it. Supposed to be a bread company, what am I talking about, Chase? The one down at the airport.
The bakery?
Bakery, it's supposed to be bakery or something like that. And Loudoun annexed it in, I know it's from speaking to the mayor down there, there's gonna be a pilot on that, we don't know what it is. Nobody has yet reached out, even said to the county, hey, we just annexed this property, and as required by law. So, William, to your question, most everything right now that the EDA is doing will negatively impact Loudoun County. But can you, do you know any reason why we should pay that much more than anybody else? The larger body. The larger body, but we get nothing. So anyhow, that's the story on the resolution. Unless somebody here is just totally objection, I think Mr. Quill has got something to say, and I'm all open to it, I'm gonna make it domestic committee.
How can you tell? I would respectfully ask that we put this off till the October workshop. I've been speaking with Mayor Bradshaw some, he's got some ideas, and so does Chase, but to address annexation, pilots, communication, that kind of stuff. So they're, we're putting something together if we can hold off just a little while longer.
Do you see anything that would balance the three entities of paying equally in the, anywhere in the future?
I don't, because formula doesn't say they have to. But I think, you know, we're addressing something besides the formula, right? I mean, we're addressing the communication and the things with the EDA. Do I see that coming more into perspective with the money? I don't, I mean, why would they?
Right, right.
They don't have to. But I think we can come up with some better.
I'm all for that, if you wanna ask and wait, I don't have a problem with it, because it's not gonna make a flip's worth of difference anyhow. They could care less what we think anyhow, that's been shown many times over.
But that would be our wishes, and I think we can add some more things in there too about pilots and annexation.
I'm totally fine with that.
Is that okay?
You gonna put it off till October workshop?
That'd be fine with me.
And they, the EDA, as you know, meets quarterly, you know, maybe a quarterly report out to us following their meeting would be good. Somebody to come in here and tell us exactly.
Like the chairman of the executive committee maybe, or somebody like that?
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Well, if we can, you know, get to the point where the cities have unrestricted growth and force upon the whole county of increasing property tax. Because they, I mean, I don't know if one's, not saying it's good or bad, but there's an instance where we had no input, no warning, no, what do you think? We're gonna do this, and now all of a sudden we have a surplus of people, even though they may live in the city limits, but the county is gonna have to increase property taxes to build a school, because.
Sure.
And like I say, I'm not saying they did wrong or they whatever, but like I said, there is an example of everybody in the county having to pick up the slack for that.
I'm with you, I'm with you. That's all I've got. Let me ask y'all something. This one crossed my mind, listened to the news a little while ago. I think it's painfully obvious heading into the two thousand twenty four election. The Democrats are coming right back at us with the COVID, with the masks, we'll have to have mail-in ballots, drop in boxes, it's all coming again. I think mandates are coming, we're already seeing them in some of the crazy, you know, liberal states and that sort of stuff, colleges. Do we pass a statement that Loudoun County will not recognize any federal or state mandates this time around? Now, I don't know it's worse, the paper it's written on, but I would love to send a message to at least those that care. Loudoun County doesn't support it, we're never gonna tell you stick your mask on, or take your shot, or nothing like that. And let me be clear, if folks wanna do it, I'm a hundred percent supportive. I don't, I don't be molding them at all, but don't try to force it on the folks that don't. I think everybody has the right to go their own way. Should we do something that fact?
Sounds good to me.
Well, I'll get a little something put together, just as plain as it can be, I'll send it out, and if everybody likes it, we just may pass us a resolution saying, leave us alone.
I had all the shots and still.
Well, but you're doing it to save others. You're saving others. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm sore out, I'm really bringing that up early, not for God.
One point to make, I think that's a decision a person makes with their doctor.
Absolutely.
And I'm not in a position where I would mandate doing something or not doing something, that's a decision you make individually with your medical professional.
One hundred percent agree.
Okay, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the budget committee, the following things were recommended. The Sheriff's Department requested a commitment for the Toledo grant. This grant has already been approved, but this is just to set the money aside in a separate account because there are not expenses currently to offset the revenue. So it's just to set aside the money. It's a two hundred thousand dollars spread over five years at forty thousand dollars a year that is available. The sheriff wants the commitment to be used for training and equipment. The budget committee also recommended, this is in regards to the debt issuance for the schools for the three million dollars. There was already a recommendation to do a thirteen-year amortization schedule, but this was just some discussion to determine the rate in the bank that was gonna be used for this issuance of debt. The county clerk's office requested a personnel change of status to move his part-time and temporary to all of his positions in part-time and temporary to a full-time position. And I believe that he also indicated this will help in training for the potential of opening up the Little City office. There was a consideration, a request to approve an appropriation out of the fire safety commit, out of the fire safety commitment of approximately nineteen thousand dollars. This is eight fire blankets that will go to area fire departments. Mr. Hart, Chief Hart, I believe that's what his title is, he came and requested this money, and the budget committee recommended that. There is a consideration to request nonprofit contributions to Ibis Place from ARPA funding, twenty-five thousand from Commissioner Morrison, and twenty-five thousand from Commissioner Sack Shaver. And then as far as the second reading of a consideration of recommendation to approve a nonprofit contribution to beauty for ashes from ARPA funding, thirty-six thousand five hundred from Commissioner Shaver, and thirty-six five hundred from Commissioner Morrison. And then we have budget amendments. In the county general fund, there was an increase in the revenue and expenses for the VCIF grant at a little more than one point seven million dollars. There was an amendment to move the budget around to match up with the GHSOG grants, and that affected equipment and salaries. Then there was a.
They're not paying attention.
Well, that's okay. You need to say something?
That's the school teacher.
Who me?
Neither one.
I think it's the fireman's problem. I can't tell who's the problem down there.
I've already heard all this, so I'm.
We've heard it in the budget.
I'm waiting for the drum roll, I'm waiting for the drummer.
Waiting on the big one here, waiting on.
I'm trying to get there, but I gotta get there all the way.
Well, I will, since you brought up on the, the school, I know it's the county, the stormwater settlement, what is that?
Is that on the year-end report?
Yeah.
Okay, so the stormwater settlement was a settlement done out in California.
It's Rosemary's fault, she's what brought it up.
Yes, ma'am, I had to do it.
It was a settlement that was done out in California, I think it had to do with that ground up case that. And so they actually sent out money to many different counties. That's what we received. We were required to set it aside in a commitment for stormwater. Okay, so Mr. Jenkins, he's not here anymore, but he's gonna get to use that money, that's what.
I thought we were just being rewarded for a lot of rain this year.
I thought it was our share in the rain tax. Yeah. Throw that in there. Hey, Loudoun don't have one, you don't get nothing.
Aaron.
Sorry, Aaron. I'm good, thank you.
All right, there was a fifty-five hundred dollar adjustment in appropriations, it's a line item adjustment for the aware commitment, and the citizens academy, it just moved the money from one line to another. There was a twenty-six hundred dollar line adjustment in the jail budget that just moved money from, once again, one line to another. There was an appropriation for EMA, this is for some type of equipment that they have. It would have been expensed in last year, but unfortunately we didn't get it in that time to put it in last year, so it's in this year, it's seventeen hundred dollars. There was a request from the animal control reserve of ten thousand dollars to fix one of the trucks. There's a line item adjustment in the senior center for one thousand dollars to move from one line to another. In the VA office, there's a line adjustment to move one thousand dollars from one line to another. Okay. And public libraries fund one fifteen, there were amendments to adjust for the Petway grant, just to shore up the budget to match up with the grant. There was an amendment in the Teleco Village Library to accept four thousand dollars contribution and to adjust the expenses by fifteen hundred and forty-six dollars in multiple lines. There was an adjustment for the Storybook Trail Grant in the, it's the board subfund, and that's how we, they got the grant when they had the accounts, and now, this is just to appropriate some of the funds that are part of that grant. In convenience centers fund one sixteen, there was an amendment request for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to purchase a balder.
Hey, for Little City.
No. We'll be a border war over that.
In special revenue fund one twenty-seven, that's ARPA, there's an appropriation to account for beauty for ashes and the Ibis Place nonprofit contribution. In highway fund one thirty-one, there was an adjustment to the state aid, Mr. Pickle referred to some of this. It was one point four billion dollars, some of what he said is part of that state aid money, but there was an increase in revenue and expense by one point four million dollars. There was line adjustments of twelve hundred and ten dollars, just to move some money around a little bit. And then there was an amendment to move thirty-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars out of vehicles into asphalt. There was a line item adjustment of seventy-three dollars, just to move it around a little bit.
We had concern over that, the seventy-three dollars.
Got hung up on it, Sam.
Red flag on the seventy-three now.
Be sneaking something in almost.
All right, all right. In general purpose school fund one forty-one, there overall, there was an increase to the revenue budget of three point one million dollars, a little bit above that, and an increase to their expense budget of a little more than three point two million dollars, which was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar reduction in their fund balance. The school federal projects fund, it was no effect on the fund balance, but it was an increase to revenue and expense by five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. In general capital projects fund one seventy-one, there was a request out of the CAR subfund, which is the Sheriff's Department subfund that they use for vehicles and vehicle maintenance. It was twenty-three thousand dollars. There was an amendment in the jail bond subfund to pave the road. There's a road outside of the jail and as part of that bond, we're paying to take care of that road.
That's been sitting there for a good while, ever since Eddie Sampson started it, as I said, so they could get in the gate to the jail.
Cars couldn't make the turn. And I hope all we're gonna do is pave that gravel and leave the road alone.
Gravel pit there, but the T dot, finally, T dot finally.
They finally approved it. They had to approve the project, so that was a hundred and one thousand dollars. There was an amendment to add the grant for the health department that was approved last year at four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, are y'all good?
They're just talking, I can't hear nothing you're saying.
We're just reaffirming your report.
We really don't afford to get to the last one.
But I have to tell you every.
It's like watching the whole bad show just to get to the end of it.
Okay, there was appropriations added for the county office building for twenty-six thousand dollars. This cash is already in the fund, but this is just to appropriate the funds.
And by the way, the building has its first two roll blocks on the foundation. Oh, it's exciting.
So, on the year-end report, I handed it out to the commissioners that were not at the budget committee, the budget committee already received a copy of it. I just have a small thing to say about it, if it's okay, okay?
Sure.
Okay, so the fund balance has grown over multiple years. The audited fund balance in two thousand seventeen was seven point two million dollars. FY twenty-two, the audited fund balance was twelve point seven million dollars. The budget committee works very hard to make sure that the recommendations to county commission are in the best interest of the county. County commission is required to approve or deny the requests from the departments and the recommendations from budget committee. The departments of the county also have great influence in this growth in regards to their requests. I have personally been told by multiple employees in the departments that they treat their budget as if it is their own money and try to save every chance possible. Also, the growth is influenced by the taxpayers that come and pay their taxes on time. The positive growth in the fund balance shows how the collaboration of all these efforts can and do impact the county finances. With this being said, the county general fund balance per the year-end report is fifteen point two million dollars, an increase of two and a half million dollars from the previous year. This growth is attributed to realizing almost all the revenue above the estimated budgets and expensing less than the budget in almost all the county departments, okay?
So while you're flipping pages, once upon a time, the county on more than one occasion had to borrow money from Loudoun County schools in order to. Sounds like while you're flipping pages, once upon a time, the county on one occasion had to borrow money from Loudoun County schools in order to operate.
That is true, even to pay payroll.
Absolutely, multiple times a year. I'm gonna thank Aaron for that, and like she said, it's a group effort. It's not any one, but the biggest contributors to this are the taxpayers. Loudoun County's revenue from property tax, sales tax, to every revenue line there is, and I think it's this way across the state, maybe across the country, has just been phenomenal. We continue to maintain our good low property tax rate and our low sales tax rate, and the folks just keep buying and paying their taxes, and we're able to do good things all the way across. It's a kudos to everybody from the top of the government to the bottom of the government.
So, in addition to the county general fund, you also have general purpose school. The fund balance in their fund, their operation fund, has increased by four point seven million dollars from the previous year. Their growth is attributed to some revenue realized above the estimates, mostly in local auction sales tax. The Board of Ed also did not expense all of their budget, their expense budget, which had a large impact on the increase in their fund balance also, and this was due to a grant that carried over into the current fiscal year. So you all have a copy of it, and I will include it in the packet from Ms. Wapler.
Tell them how much it is. How much, what's the school's fund balance?
Did I say that? I'm sorry, I get a little.
Get a little bit crazy.
A little crazy?
Yeah, just a little. It was a little more than eleven billion dollars.
And they've come a long way.
They were. Three years ago, they were broke and needed more.
Yeah, yeah. We thought they was gonna have to go sell apples on the market. Thank you, Aaron. Great job.
Anything else?
That's adjourned.
We'll call it an evening.
That is not be less than all out anyhow, so don't laugh.
I can tell you every third word you say.
Every third word. Chase hadn't paid no attention.
We got a motion to adjourn or?
No, we're done.
We're adjourned or what?
We are done.
I love spending this afternoon with y'all folks.
Formal, I don't know. Just nervous, one they never had.
Think very much for pure well. Eight-six-five.
You broke the remote.
Seven-seven-four. Four-four-four-seven. Three-four, four-four-four-seven.